and I call this regular Board meeting of July 10, 2025, to order. The time is 5:01. I'd like to remind everyone to silence your electronic devices. We acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the territorial homeland of the Njuu, the Moappa Band of Paiyuts, and the Las Vegas Band of Paiyuts. We'll start with item 1.01. Our flag salute. Trustee Asparza Strofigan, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll next move to Agenda Item 1.02, Adoption of the Agenda. Reminder, motion to adopt the Agenda and the Amendment with flexibility, so I will ask Trustee Dominguez.
Madam President, members of the Board, I would like to make a motion to adopt the Agenda and addendum with flexibility.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there, before I take a second, is there anyone that has not completed a public speaker card or a yellow comment card for this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close that. I have a motion from Trustee Dominguez. Do I have a second? Trustee Asparza Strofigan?
Second that motion.
I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes six to zero. Next, we'll move on to Consent Agenda Item Information. Before I open that, is there anyone that has not completed a public speaker card for this item? Okay, seeing none. From what I understand, Trustee Lorena Biasari, would you like to pull something from the consent agenda?
Yes, I would like, thank you, Madam President. I would like to pull Consent Agenda Item 2.03 for discussion.
Okay, thank you. So, we will motion first to pull that item. Do I have a first? Well, I have a first from Trustee Biasari. Do I have a second? Trustee Biasari would like to pull for discussion item 2.03. I'll go ahead and second that, so I have a first and a second. All right, please cast your votes. That motion is split, so I've never had this. So, I'm going to ask our Board Legal Counsel. So, it's a three to three.
Madam President, it has to be four to pass, so it doesn't pass.
Okay, so that motion, that motion does not pass, then I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Do I have a first? Trustee Biasari? Are you in the queue? That's what I see.
Not in the queue.
No, Trustee Cabazos.
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a statement that I've, I've made a few statements now on the consent agenda, and it has been difficult to ask questions that are not, questions that are pre-allocated by the President and Vice President. And so, it, it's been, I've, I've found that it was very enlightening when we had our Board Governance Meeting or Retreat, and I look forward to seeing the changes that we can make going forward.
Thank you.
And I would like to second the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Dominguez. I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes from five to one. Next, I'm going to ask Trustee Henry to please read the warrants.
Thank you, Madam President. The ratified warrants as listed in the Bill's Payable Transmittal and Board Memorandum Number 1-25-26 in the total amount of $180,525,422.88.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move to Item 3.01. This is a public hearing and approval of the 2025 Medium Term Bond Authorization Resolution. This is the time and place that was published on June 27, 2025, to conduct a public clearing on discussion of and possible action on approval of the 2025 Medium Term Bond Authorization Resolution, authorizing the sale and issuance, issuance of medium term obligations in the amount of up to $50 million in order to finance all or portion of the cost of acquiring, improving, and equipping school facilities, including transportation vehicles and facilities, and technology equipment and facilities. Authorization for the Superintendent or the interim Chief Financial Officer to specify the terms of the bonds, and for the President and Clerk of the School Board of Trustees to sign necessary documents. Is there anyone here for Item 3.01? I do not see anybody. Well, wait a minute. No, it's not for 3.01. So, seeing none. Do we have any questions from the staff? No, no questions from our trustees? Okay, seeing none. Then I'm going to, the hearing is done. We are now going to close it, and... Ms. Bartholomew, would you like to say anything before we move on?
I was just being prepared. In case there were questions, I'm stymied. So, I'm good if you're good.
Okay, one moment. Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I think it might help if we kind of give a little bit of a description of what a hearing is versus what a presentation is.
Got it. Ms. Bartholomew.
Sure. So, Madam President, members of the Board, Superintendent Ebert, Diane Bartholomew, interim CFO for the record, for a few more days, right? We're waiting with bated breath. So, the district is gearing up, right, for its next cycle of bonds. So, this item is regarding the medium term bonds and will be used to purchase buses, white fleet, and possibly some technology equipment. So, the purpose of this item is to inform the public of the district's intent to issue those bonds and to allow for public comment. That's basically what the public hearing is.
Thank you. Trustee Asparza Strofigan.
Madam President, I know that we were all thoroughly briefed, and all of the documents are posted publicly in advance, so seeing that we don't have any questions, I can make a motion.
Thank you. I have a first. Trustee Cabazos.
I will second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That passes six to zero. With the flexible agenda, we're going to go ahead and move to Item 3.02, Employment Agreement, Regional Superintendent. This is discussion and possible action. I will turn it over to our Superintendent, but before I do, is there anyone, I have, I do have one person for public comment, and I might have some others, so one minute. Okay, I do have one person under public comment for this item, but I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our Superintendent, Ms. Ebert.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, for your consideration in 3.02. I am asking for the approval to hire Theodore Robinson III. He comes to us from Colorado with over 20 years of public education experience. He currently serves as the Executive Director of Secondary Education in the Thompson School District in Loveland, California, or California, Colorado, excuse me. Most notably, I'd like to share with all of you, under his leadership, increased graduation rates from 79.4% to 90%, and increased concurrent enrollments from 40.
Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to, the hearing is done. We are now going to close it, and Ms. Bartholomew, would you like to say anything before we move on?
I was just being prepared in case there were questions. I'm stymied.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm good if you're good.
Trustee Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I think it might help if we kind of give a little bit of a description of what a hearing is versus what a presentation is.
Got it. Ms. Bartholomew?
Sure. So, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert, Diane Bartholomew, interim CFO, for the record, for a few more days, right? We're waiting with bated breath. So the district is gearing up, right, for its next cycle of bonds. So this item is regarding the medium-term bonds and will be used to purchase buses, white fleet, and possibly some technology equipment. So the purpose of this item is to inform the public of the district's intent to issue those bonds and to allow for public comment. That's basically what the public hearing is.
Thank you. Trustee Asparza Strofigan?
Madam President, I know that we were all thoroughly briefed, and all of the documents are posted publicly in advance, so seeing that we don't have any questions, I can make a motion.
Thank you. I have a first. Trustee Cabasos?
I will second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That passes six to zero. With the flexible agenda, we're going to go ahead and move to item 3.02, Employment Agreement, Regional Superintendent. This is discussion and possible action. I will turn it over to our superintendent, but before I do, is there anyone? I have, I do have one person for public comment, and I might have some others, so one minute. Okay, I do have one person under public comment for this item, but I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our superintendent, Ms. Ebert.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. For your consideration in 3.02, I am asking for the approval to hire Theodore Robinson III. He comes to us from Colorado with over 20 years of public education experience. He currently serves as the Executive Director of Secondary Education in the Thompson School District in Loveland, California, or California, Colorado, excuse me. Most notably, I'd like to share with all of you, under his leadership, increased graduation rates from 79.4% to 90%, and increased concurrent enrollments from 4,000 to 9,000 annually, has experience in multi-million dollar budgets, led student advisory committees, and dual-language immersion initiatives to promote student voice and equitable learning opportunities. Prior to that, he also held other administrative positions, principal, assistant principal, secondary behavioral coordinator, and started his career as a special education teacher. So with that, Madam President, I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the trustee? Trustee Barron?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, Madam Superintendent, or the SI as I call you, I noticed that you've made a really good push in attracting leadership back to this, back to the school district. You managed to bring back a person who just happened to work at the, at the state I am very familiar with, and quite frankly, I was impressed that you were also able to get one of our very impressive people who actually applied for your job, and brought him back from, quite frankly, a pretty good situation. So you've been casting a net nationwide then to attract more, to more people, to bring some fresh views, some fresh blood into, into our school district. Am I paraphrasing, paraphrasing this correct?
Yes, sir. Our parents, our children, our entire community deserve the best globally, not only just here in Nevada. We have, as you mentioned, very good and exceptional talents here within our school district. Several people have been promoted recently as well with retirements, and yes, we cast that wide net, and Theodore is coming to you, Robinson III is coming to all of you for consideration.
Yes, I, I read through his, I read through his resume, very impressive. And if he can replicate what he's done prior at, at, at any region that he's appointed to oversee, well, I'm kind of hoping he's, well, I'm, I'm going to stop right there. I, I highly, I really approve of your casting this wide net and, and bringing more people into our fold. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Biasari?
Thank you, Madam President. So I did have a comment. I was looking into Mr. Theodore Robinson, and while he does have these really good gains and improvements in graduation rates, the corresponding gains in proficiency, according to their own data, this 27% of eighth graders are three grade levels behind in reading and 31% in math. And so that, that concerns me a little bit because I know the graduation rates are going up, but not the proficiency rates. The other thing is that here in Clark County, we have over 1,500 principals and administrators who understand our challenges and our community. For such a critical role, I believe we should see more than one candidate, especially candidates from within our own district, CCSD. And I would like to see someone from within, and I believe bringing people from out of state sends the wrong message, maybe that we don't have that kind of skill and talent within our district. So I would like to request that we table this item and bring back a broader slate of candidates, including CCSD administrators on that slate.
Thank you. We can't entertain a motion just yet, but thank you for that comment. Superintendent, do you want to add anything before I take the next person?
Yeah, just for process-wise, an understanding for the board and the public as well, when these types of positions are, are posted for opportunity for people internally and externally, we only bring to you the candidates that are out of state. So we actually have two new region superintendents. One is Dr. Oswald. He was appointed. He is an internal candidate, so he was promoted from being a principal supervisor, a SAS, but you do not have his materials in front of you because he was internally promoted. You, as a board, only see and hire people from the outside, just as you did with our CFO as well, coming from the outside, you approved his candidacy as well.
Thank you. Trustee Asparza Strofigan?
So having the conversation, Superintendent, then the process would have been that it would have been, the application was open for all candidates, internal and external. So maybe for the edification of all of our board, you interviewed internal candidates as well?
Yes, that is correct.
And the reason that I even mention that is we gave you the charge to cast the net and bring in, like, real talent, and I would just kind of say that I am very pleased with this gentleman's, not only his resume, but if you look at some of the things that he's done with family engagement, community involvement, I look forward to hopefully having his talent on our team, knowing that this gentleman has moved the needle. And I know it's difficult when we look at proficiency scores specifically, but there are other measures and metrics, and we look at leadership and skills. So I would just like to say, I like that we're bringing in divergent and different thinking, because sometimes when you have only internal systems, and we've got a lot of internal talent, don't get me wrong, but you sometimes will get group think. And so I just would say that I'm, I'm thankful that you did do that. I want to make that statement and put that on record.
Thank you. Trustee Cabasos?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, trustee Asparza Strofigan, for, as usual, saving me a lot of talking. She's clairvoyant here. I want to basically reiterate what she just said. It's not just about the data, it's about the person. So what I'd like to ask right now is from any of the folks that would like to, going from the superintendent or anybody that she would like to delegate, what was something that really stood out to you that just really said this would be a great fit for our district? What's something that really stood out in his interviews?
Since I have shared some of, and I apologize, I will, I will make sure that I do not pronounce an extra N in Robison. I caught myself there. But Dr. Jesse Welsh had a team of, of our leaders, and he can describe the entire process to you and what they had to say.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Ebert. To your, to your question, I have to be honest, when Mr. Robison came in for the interview, he frankly knocked our socks off, and I'm not saying that lightly. We were very impressed with his experiences, his focus on the data, and really moving the needle for students. I think you'll see that's something, and I can tell you, I mean, he's already engaged in some of the things with us as we're planning for the upcoming school year. Really appreciate his focus on student outcomes and making sure that we are doing things for students first. I think another thing that I would really highlight was focus on student voice in the work that we do. I think you'll, you'll hear, and I know that just from what I've heard from him, is that he really is focused on making sure that we are incorporating student voice in the work that we do, especially when we're talking about our secondary students, because, I mean, they have a, a big stake in what we're doing. And then it's just as well as, you know, while nothing compares to the size of Clark County, I mean, we know that, you know, it's a, it's a very good mid-sized, I would say, school district, where the work that he has been doing, I think, translates very well to the work as a region superintendent. And I, one more thing I would share is that, you know, with some of the structuring that we've done in reorganizing, we've put those supports in place to help, you know, both him and Dr. Oswald in their new roles, to make sure that they're successful as region superintendents. So really excited. We've had some initial work with the team, and just really excited for the work that we have, have ahead and the focus that we're going to have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Superintendent and Dr. Welsh. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Trustee Barron?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. I'd just like to say, sometimes when, from looking at, from the management and the organizational culture, sometimes, you know, I myself, I am a committed capitalist. I do believe in bringing in people who drive the needle, that drive the competition. You know, if we have an organization, and I know, I know we have fantastic leaders, I know because I've talked to them, I converse regularly with them, right? But it's not just a bad thing to bring in someone who, quite frankly, pushes that, that boundary, that pushes, you know, the status quo. If we, if we believe, and of course, in our system, that we try to attract and promote and have the best and brightest leaders, it behooves us to go ahead and invite people from outside the organization to provide a divergent, sometimes a divergent view to bring us in. And in this case, you know, we're talking about a gentleman who's, he's going to be a migrant. He's new to our valley. Just think about this, to actually, to actually have the courage to go ahead and probably sell your house, leave your friends and family behind, move across the city, I mean, across the country, and settle here in a, in a new environment, that takes a certain amount of courage. It takes a pioneering spirit. I, I, I really welcome, you know, there's a reason why the public, when we're seeking out you, our superintendent, right, the public insisted upon a national search. This is following along with what the public wants. You are, you are continuing their vision, quite frankly, with casting that wide net and bringing in people in from outside the organization. Quite frankly, I, I'd very much like to see this net get, get cast even wider and bring in more people. I, I think, I think our residents, I think our children, I know my son, I think he's going to deserve to have, you know, the very best that we can possibly breed. And the mere fact, I, I'd also think that we have a pulse now, for whatever, for whatever reason, now people are beginning to believe in our, in our district, enough, enough that people are willing to come in from outside, again, leaving, leaving something they already have built behind to come here. I, I welcome this. I think it's a, it's a good sign for the future, and I would just, over at RTC, we just welcomed our new deputy CEO, and we got him from Atlanta. So it's, it's good to bring in people from, from outside. I guess that really wasn't a question. Are you planning on bringing, how are your chops in bringing in more people, I think? I guess that's the question that I have for you.
Madam President, members of the board, again, I'll start with almost what I started with in initial question, is that our children deserve the best and the brightest. And so we will cultivate though our staff members here. You all know 25 years myself. I left, came back, making sure that all of the work that we do is focused on, on our students and the talents, the human talent, internal and external, is important.
Thank you. Trustee Biasari?
Thank you, Madam President, and I would just like to add, as a last comment, that although Mr. Robinson has impressive achievements, and yes, personality traits are important, but I would like to see that moving forward, we base any and all hiring on proficiency performance. Thank you.
Thank you. I will go ahead and go to public comment. I do have one person. Lenny, and if you could help me pronounce your last name when you get up here, I would appreciate it.
Okay, my name is Lenny Lither, L-I-T-H-E-R, the I's pronounced long, don't know why.
Thank you, Mr. Lither. Please proceed.
Okay, well, first of all, I really wish that when, there's so many, there were so many positive comments just said, but almost nothing that actually went to any details. Is he a qualified person? Yes, he has some great experience, but is he qualified for this position, first of all? Because I feel like he's not getting a little bit of raise. He's not the district supervisor, he, he's not the district superintendent, he's in the leadership of that district. That district has 15,000 students. This district has 300,000 students. A region, I don't know exactly, each one's going to be different, but let's say divided by three. That's a huge jump. That's not a promotion, that is skipping grade scales, okay? Is he, is his performance that outstanding? I don't see it, because I don't see how it could relate. I would have loved to seen Ms. Ebert bring him in for maybe an assistant superintendent position or something a little bit less, so show us that he can do that work, that he's qualified for this large of a position, and then, okay, then in a year or two, get him into that higher one. Because perhaps he has these talents that the public hasn't seen, because we weren't in those interviews, we haven't seen that. We can see some stuff. He moves the needle on a district of 15,000 students. That's not enough, in my opinion. Next, I really want to also, before I forget, I have to talk about one of the clauses in the contract, because I'm so tired of this clause, where superintendents can give an unlimited pay raise. Now thankfully, I have faith in Ms. Ebert that she wouldn't use that clause outrageously, but we know the last guy did. He was giving 20, 25, 40% pay raises anytime he wanted. He did that multiple times. And honestly, the school board has a responsibility, a fiduciary responsibility for this community. And I'm sorry, Ms. Ebert doesn't need to give him an unlimited pay raise. I figure 5% in the contract, where she can do it without the school board's approval, would be great, and anything more than 5% to go to the school board to get approval, I think that would be reasonable. We need to stop giving out money like it's candy, because it's not your money, it's the taxpayers' money. I paid so much taxes last year. I'm tired of, honestly, and I feel like the school board is just constantly, just, they don't care about budgets. Next, I want to say, when looking at his accomplishments, we were talking about him moving the needle, I felt a little bit concerned, because when looking or researching him, it seemed like his biggest accomplishment is in social and emotional learning, which, as a former kindergarten teacher, specialist teacher, advocate, yes, I believe kids need that. But it's not the number one priority when I'm looking for somebody to be a region superintendent. I would like them to be qualified in that area. He talked about diversity, equity, inclusion, which, yes, I do think that's important, but it also concerns me because Trump wants to cut all. I don't want us to lose federal funding. So show me how he's going to move the needle in other topics that are just as important. And my time is up, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lither. Seeing no other public comment, I do have a motion from trustee Biasari. Trustee Biasari, would you like to restate your motion?
I would like to table this item for a future, for a future agenda item where we get a slate with more candidates that include CCSD administrators.
Thank you. I have a first for that motion. Is there a second? Not see a second. That motion does not move forward. I'll entertain another motion. Trustee Barron?
Yes, thank you, Madam Superintendent. I'd like to make a motion to accept the contract here with Mr. Theodore Robinson III.
Thank you. Do I have a first? Do I have a second?
I will second the motion.
Thank you, trustee Asparza Strofigan. I know that, just wanted to remind the board that we do have a policy within our board that acting only upon the recommendations of the superintendent in matters of employment or dismissal of district personnel. And so that is GP 4.2, so just as a reminder, role of our trustees, what our role is. So I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes five to one. I'd like to move now to, and we're going to hopefully celebrate everyone that comes on, so I'm going to save my, my, asking you to have the team step, get up, and we can acknowledge them all together. So 3.03, Employment Agreement for Social, School Associate Superintendent. Turn it over to Ms. Ebert.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. This evening, I'm asking for approval to hire Darlene Delgado as School Associate Superintendent. Most recently, she has served as the Director of Educational and Organizational Programs at the Young Women's Leadership Academy. She has served also in the Clark County School District as a comprehensive high school principal, a career and technical education principal, managing a care too as well, multimillion dollars of, of budgets, has led a student achievement up to 94% within the graduating classes that she has overseen in community engagement, advanced placement coursework, served as an assistant principal at multiple schools, as well as a dean of students. She is by literate and brings a wealth of knowledge to our community and is recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Any questions from the trustees? Trustee Biassadi.
Thank you, Madam President. So I, the name was familiar to me, just two years ago, after the tragic death of Jonathan Lewis Jr. at Rancho High School, many parents, myself included, were deeply alarmed and eager to discuss what went wrong, what went wrong and how we could do better. As a parent of a high school teach, student myself in CCSD, I personally tried to speak with her but was turned away and told she had no time, not even for a five-minute conversation. Instead, she retired mid-year, leaving behind-
Point of order.
Trustee Biassadi, is there, is there a direction that you're headed with your comment? Okay.
Thank you.
It's not, it's just that, it's not, I could be wrong, but it's not on the agenda. Perhaps our, our new board council could weigh in?
I was on the queue and I was given my time to-
Yeah, go ahead and trust to be a side, please continue.
And I do not interrupt any of my colleagues when they're speaking, so I would-
Thank you so much. Please proceed.
Appreciate that. Instead, Ms. Delgado retired, Principal Delgado, at the time retired mid-year, leaving behind ongoing issues at Rancho that still haven't been resolved. To now see her name brought up in, for this central office position gives me some concern and some pause. So for that reason, I would like to request that we table this.
And we won't take a motion yet, but I'll come back to you. So thank you for that comment. Any other comments? Trustee Baron.
Yeah, I was bringing up a point of order. The applicant, the person for this position, their, their record is not part of this debate, quite frankly. And I, I think we're treading into some serious implications. There's other things that are implied by, by making these statements against this, against this applicant. As a matter of fact, I would say that if there's anybody here on this board who's familiar with this applicant, right, because they did apply, even myself, I'd point out, even though maybe it's not a point of her contract, as the principal of Southwest Tech, is it Southwest or Southeast Tech? Her school was, was a national school of the year, not second place, not third place, a national, not, not Clark County, national school of the year. She replicated the, her accomplishments were replicated at Rancho High School and including during a very difficult time during, right, it seemed like right after she got appointed, we, we fell into, of course, COVID. And she was able to marshal everyone together. And then, again, the, the school did not lose as much as other schools did. Matter of fact, when she came back, she addressed a lot of issues. We had two and then three social works, but they weren't social workers. These were actually certified and licensed therapists that I think did a lot to carry the children. And then later on, the families of these, of these students that I know that I worked with, and helped us to not have a precipitous drop in graduation, but we maintained. And I'll say, we persevered. I'm proud of that as part of that staff. And I will measure that against anybody who thinks that they know her, but really don't. Also, you know, the, again, she was able to maintain, and it's one thing to go ahead and be, have your school be the very best school in the country, a very specialized school, but she did the same thing at a comprehensive high school. And quite frankly, she's a fantastic role model. She's not just Latina, she's also the children of refugees.
Thank you, trustee Baron. Trustee Zamora.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind my colleagues also about our governance policy 4.2, section C, where it does state trustees must refrain from expressing individual judgments on the superintendent or the employees. So just keep that in mind. And then going back to what President, you mentioned too, section 6D, acting only upon the recommendations of the superintendent in matters of employment or dismissal or district personnel, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. Trustee Esparza Strofigan.
Superintendent, I do have questions, just so that we, gives us a little bit of a picture of what your vision is of how you are reorganizing the, the team. When we interviewed you, you talked about aligning talent to suit the needs of the schools. And one of the things you mentioned, which I want to ask you, is that there are over 370-plus schools, and you noticed kind of some interesting observations about secondary, middle, and elementary. So can you talk to Ms. Delgato's, and what is the average from the school associate superintendents? How many are in those ranges, elementary, middle? I don't need exact numbers, but what is that and maybe the reasoning for that?
Thank you for the question, trustee Esparza Strofigan. Specifically with the school associate superintendents, we filled three positions. And in that group of talented, very talented people, but one of the things that I noticed when studying our organization and the skillset of our staff, you have, such as Ms. Delgado, secondary experience, not only at a comprehensive high school. It's much different comprehensive high school versus a career and technical academy. Night and day, students, you know, community, athletics, all of, you know, the list can go on. Within the structure, prior to our, my team and I arriving, everyone was aligned K-12. Every school, principal supervisor had elementary, middle, and high school in their portfolio. As noted, across our school district, we have hundreds, not hundreds, excuse me, well, no, when you add in one and two star schools. And they all have different levels of where they're at and their level of need. When you think of, and I, you know, I want to be careful here because stars are not the only rating and understanding of our schools. It is one academic measure, but it is inclusive, not only of proficiency, right, where the expectation is for that specific grade level, but growth. And we value growth in our community because we have such a diverse community. Our children come from everywhere, right? Not only within our own state, whether, you know, they're moving north and south, but, you know, we have a lot of migrants and immigrants, both. And so, and I, and I will, because she has allowed me to do this many times in the past, but one of our deputies used to be a school associate superintendent. She too has experience at high school level, comprehensive and career and technical academy, opening it up, but she was supervising elementary schools. Yes, learning is a, and she's very qualified to do it, but her expertise is at the high school level. And when we think about the medical profession, right? When you get into tier one and tier two and you think about all of those pieces, we need to use our resources strategically. And it's not that she can't supervise elementary, middle, and high, but we need the experts in elementary, who were very successful in elementary, supporting our elementary schools. And so the team spent, and we kicked around, I was like, okay, here superintendent, how's it, you know, well, have we talked about this, this, and this, and this? Because we're, we're meeting all of our staff. And so over several iterations with the region superintendents, as well as bringing in the school associate superintendents, have developed now, and this skillset is exactly what we need. The percentage-wise of current SASSs, I don't know percentage off the top of my head, I'm phoning a friend, one-third, two-thirds. Okay. So two-thirds currently are, SASSs are elementary and one-third secondary.
I still have the floor, correct? Okay. So my follow-up question, because I'm looking at big picture, moving forward, you mentioned she's biliterate. How many percentage-wise do we have representation in our, in our SASS level for anyone else that is biliterate? Are you aware of that?
The two deputies are both biliterate. And I'm looking at other region super- and two SASSs. I'm sorry, just currently one.
So we have one-
One.
SASS-
Thank you.
-that is biliterate out of all of our supervisors, which is pretty typical for some school districts. But we have an opportunity to bring in another individual that is biliterate and fluent. And knowing that our population of students, we did the interviews, we offered the surveys in multiple languages, and Spanish is the predominant second language, English is first. So I just want to bring that up for my colleagues to understand. And 49% of our students are Hispanic in our district. The last thing, we know, and we were told, that a third of our principals are brand-new between the year of one to five years of experience. Knowing her resume, and I wish, I definitely dug into it really thorough, knowing that she came from comprehensive, a magnet that was distinguished, I believe magnet schools of the year in 2018, that's nationwide, that's a huge accolade, it's really hard to earn that. Knowing she was, I believe, an administrator for an online school, Nevada Learning Academy, and all the plethora of other things. And I like the fact that when she went in her retirement mode, it mentioned that she was in Young Women's Leadership Academy, which is a public charter school. So there's some growth there. And again, I just want to go back to, we have to bring in some different thinking and some innovation, which is the reason why we hired our superintendent. So I just want to point that out. I think our principals need support and they need coaching. So I would definitely be in support of that if, when, if and when you're ready for a motion.
Thank you. Trustee Biassadi.
Thank you, Madam President. I had a question to revert back to Vice President Zamora's comment on the governance policy. My question is, am I not allowed to share my personal experience during discussion?
And I will pull in our counsel to clarify because of this specific person was also a former employee. So Teddy, can you jump in? Mr. Parker?
Sure. Madam Vice President, I would suggest, trustee Biassadi, that you have to confine your comments to what's on the agenda first. And your comments went beyond what's in front of you, mainly the qualifications of this person. None of the trustees here are charged with the responsibility of hiring. Your policy and procedure decisions truly. The superintendent has put someone before you with a resume for you to consider. Your discussions went beyond what's in front of you, which really could potentially be an OML, open meeting law issue, because now you're considering things that the public cannot be aware of, things that may be concerning to you, which is fine, as long as you're using that to evaluate the resume. But when you go outside of the information available to the public and available to your colleagues, that's what the governance is telling you not to do. So, I mean, I guess this is a moment that we can all use to, to do that when it pertains to any other agenda item. And that's why it's sometimes difficult for a superintendent or any executive director to respond to questions that are not truly within the four corners of an agendaized item. So I actually thought that superintendent Ebert did a great job of answering questions within the agenda, and I think she actually went outside to give you even more detail, and which I think everyone's appreciative of. But I will tell you, it's difficult when you provide personal opinions because there's no facts upon which anyone else can actually delve into, because they're only held by you. So if you could try to confine it to what's in front of you, keeping in mind and giving deference to the, to the school district superintendent, who's placed the information in front of everyone to judge, that would be, probably be the best. Does that answer your question, Vice President Zamora?
Yes, thank you.
And I do have a second. I just really quickly want to address that. I understand how you're providing that clarity, but at the same time, when I'm discussing it, I believe that discussion is amongst the trustees. So I can understand why the public may, may not be made privy to my experience. However, I feel it is my role to bring up issues that I find concerning up for discussion. Whether those issues are validated or not, that's the freedom we all share here. So I, I guess what I'm not understanding is how, moving forward, I have to constrict my arguments or discussions, whatever I want to bring up, and just narrow it down to not include my personal experience.
I think we all benefit, if I may, Madam President, I think we all benefit if you're using your personal experiences to address what's in front of you. When you go beyond that, then no one can really benefit from that. And I, I believe you're now bringing into play things that have nothing to do with the agendized item. It's more of a personal presentation, which is not what this, this meeting is for. I mean, no one is being asked, and no one should volunteer information that is beyond this, this agenda. Otherwise, we'll be here for days talking about things that were not properly noticed. The public could not be prepared for those because they didn't expect, or they should have no reason to expect that we get that far field from what's in front of us. This agendized item is talking about the qualifications, in this case, of the school associate superintendent. Contract is there, her qualifications are there, you make a decision based upon that. Remember, you're not, this board does not pick who is placed in front of us. The superintendent does that, that's her responsibility.
But then when we vote on it, I believe we have to take in account issue, factors that we feel contribute to the qualification or disqualification of a certain person. And that's why I was bringing that forward, because I was taking that into account of when, you know, we were talking about said person. And I did have another question, if you were done.
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay.
Another point of order, this is not a debate.
So my other question was to Superintendent Ebert, did she address why she resigned mid-year?
Madam President, members of the board, I did not specifically ask that question of the candidate.
Thank you. Trustee Cabasos.
I think most of my questions have been addressed by our board council, and I thank him for the clarification. As a former board president, we do need to be very careful about sticking to what is on the agenda. And also too, we just had an all-day governance training on, I believe it was July 2nd, where our governance trainer was very specific about what lane we stay in and what is our role and our responsibility. So I believe there are two other motions ahead of me, but I was ready to make a motion or a second also, but I'm going to defer to those who came before me, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. And maybe you can stop me, Mr. Parker, if I'm out of bounds here. So I did have a question, and I, I was looking at the, the policy, our policy, GP 4.2, 6C and D. And obviously, C, it says refrain from expressing individual judgments of the performance of the superintendent or employees. But then D goes into saying acting upon recommendations of the superintendent in matters of employment. So the word acting to me is like, could mean expressing or kind of expressing concern. My question to the superintendent was if, and please stop me if I'm out of bounds, was just kind of wondering why, if the question was asked, why she wanted to return from retirement?
Superintendent Ebert, for the record, yes, that question was asked.
Could, without going into like personal detail, because I know people retire or leave for numerous reasons, is there any, any way to express, you know, without going too far into detail, why-
Madam President, point of order, please.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
Certainly. And trustee Dominguez, at this point, you're asking a question that could involve personal information, information that may not have anything, anything to do with her qualifications. And, you know, we could all speculate, but that's not what's in front of you. Again, and let me say this, because I think we're now treading into something that's truly not our role. It is not your, none of our roles to do the interviews. It's not our role to determine the questions. It's our role to determine whether or not this resume and this contract that's before us is approvable or not. Everything else you're second guessing, you're a superintendent. So your, your question was well taken, and I think it gives us a platform for- So your question was well taken, and I think it gives us a platform for us to go forward from here. It should not matter if that question was asked, if it does not affect her qualifications or this contract, because it may be something so dear to her heart that it should not be put out in the public. And we're not here to expose those types of questions. We weren't the ones doing or charged with doing the interviews. So hopefully this helps everyone understand that's what we have the superintendent for.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. And just for the public, right, that is trustee Cabasos mentioned it, that we ourselves are going through an evolution of holding ourselves accountable and training ourselves on parliamentary procedure and other governance tools that we could use. And so it is a learning process for us, and I'm grateful that we are applying what we are learning. So thank you. With that, we do have no other questions. I do know that we have public comment, and I didn't open it up to see if there was anybody else. I do have Mr. Lyther for 3.03, but is there anybody else available for public comment? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Lyther, if you could come up?
Well, thank you for saying my name correctly. My name's Lenny Lyther. First, I want to say that we should be talking about the records. The resume's in front of me. I looked up her history. I did what any parent should be doing in this district. Are you going to hire someone? Let's see what their history is. I think some persons just asked a great question, you know, did they say why, trying to not go into specific details? Because some of that could be classified, or it could be something that you can't share with the public. But it should be asked. Same as her handling of the situation that happened at Rancho High School, that should be asked. Because for me, it looked bad when she retired and sent out a letter to the public at that school saying that she decided to retire and spend time with the family. And then shortly after, went and got another job. For me, that made me question, what else was going on there? Was there something else? So I, you know, I know Ms. Ebert just said that she didn't ask details about why she retired at the time, but I think those kind of questions should have been asked. Also, another trustee recently brought up the fact that she's Latina. And, you know, I'm sorry, as a parent, I had Melissa Gutierrez as a region superintendent before. I had her as a principal before at one of the schools I was at. She was absolutely one of the worst principals, me or my wife, I'd ever dealt with. I don't want to ever hire someone just because of their ethnicity. I want to hire her because of their qualifications. And does she have good qualifications? Yes, she does. That's where you then have to balance out the facts and other information that you have. When I looked at her resume, that information, though, regarding what happened at Rancho, really gave me deep pause. And it really made me question, what else was going on there? And I really wish before they hired someone like her with that situation, I wish a little more informational fact-finding was given to that, because I don't know how much information or time was spent, and perhaps you couldn't go into that detail. But maybe it'd be nice if it was addressed to the board and said, yes, we did look into that, we feel very comfortable with the information that we discovered or informed, learned upon. Next, again, it's not your money. Stop giving out these unlimited raises. Stop approving that. You guys can put an end to that. And even if you don't today, then you better soon, because it's going to be a point that we don't have any money. Because how often have you say, oh, we can't give raises to teachers, we can't give raises, can't pay for this, can't pay for that? How about you stop the gravy train of money? And again, like I said earlier, 5% raise, no approval from the school board, done. That's reasonable. She could give it every single year, that'd be a generous raise. So I guess that's it for me. I'd love to say more, but I know there's, have to try and stay on topic best I can, and I'm not always great at that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Seeing no other public comment, trustee Beasadi, I know you had entertained a motion. Do you want to restate it?
I would like to keep my motion to table this item for a future application.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Beasadi. Do I have a second? Trustee Dominguez.
I'll second the motion.
So I have a first and a second to table item 3.03. Please cast your votes. That motion dies, it does not pass, so yeses are two and nos are four. I'll entertain another motion. Trustee Cabasos.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I would like to make a motion to accept the employment agreement for Darlene Delgado, agenda item 3.03, for the position of school associate superintendent.
Thank you, trustee Cabasos. And trustee Esparsa Stoffigan, my forgiveness, I, you had said you wanted to make a motion.
It was the same motion.
Okay, would you like to second that?
I will second.
Okay, I have a first and I have a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes four to two. We will go ahead and move to item 4.01. These are public comment on items not listed as action items on the agenda. Is there anyone that has not submitted a public speaker card? Okay, we have those that called in and signed up first, and so Mr. Lyther, I'd like to call you back up. And then Mr. Rogers, you are after that. We have two podiums. Is Mr. Rogers still here? Yes. Mr. Lyther, you can go ahead and proceed.
Feel popular today. First, I want to say that the school board needs to start doing better for this district and this community. Part of it is your interactions with each other. One minute you're accusing somebody of doing something, next minute you're doing the exact same thing. So overall, I'm glad that you're doing some trainings, and it needs to happen soon, it needs to happen better. Next, I would like to give at least a quick prop to Ms. Ebert. I feel like she's handling most of the situations pretty well, but we need to stop giving max contracts. We need to stop, I dislike the NBA, sometimes he says, because they're giving mediocre players 10, $20 million contracts. You guys are doing the same thing, and it's not your money. Today, there was a good opportunity to at least pause the second person and say, hey, let's come back with a contract, we're not automatically giving her approval to give unlimited raises. You can rework some of these contracts, and you can start doing it today, or at least at the next time. I mean, but why not start today? I don't understand why you're always going with that. Next, and again, I'm unsure about how many different topics I can touch on, but you know what? The Supreme Court doesn't always agree on all the same laws or all the same regulations. And I think sometimes some of what Mr. Parker is saying is absolutely right on, but sometimes it's a little bit interpretive. And obviously, so much more training needs to happen, and it shouldn't always be happening in front of the community. Because you know what? One thing, I forgot his name, the new hire Theodore Robinson, Mr. Robinson, talks about building trust and getting the community stake. Look at the number of parents here tonight. There's almost none. Three hundred thousand students, let's say 400,000 parents at least. And how many of them come here because we don't feel our voices are heard? We don't feel they matter? I've been accused of plagiarizing, writing things before by a former trustee, and I'm not trying to bring that up, I'm just saying like, you guys got to work out and reach out to the community to get us involved, because you're, we are your allies. I know I've been a teacher before, and I used to work with one of the trustees. Well, if I needed to, something for a student, I'd reach out to them, and they didn't ask me about ethnicity, they didn't ask me any other details. They said, you know, can I help the student? And they'd be like, yeah, sure, I can do that. And that's what the school board needs to be doing more so. And I just feel, again, I'm going off so many topics, it's really frustrating. I've spent 10 years in this district as a parent. I literally moved to America, to this district, because my wife wanted to come here. And then recently, my wife, who was raised in China countryside, where she had to study by candlelight, and she thought, when I came to America, I really thought American schools were going to be so great, and now I see why American education's failing. That's what this district has brought to an immigrant, because we love to throw that term around, to an immigrant, that's why American education's failing. We got to do better.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers, and then Ms. Lynn Green.
All right, Dr. Kyle Rogers with the record. Last time I was here, I was here to discuss an issue with the public records request. Earlier today, I don't know if you saw, but a couple hours ago, I emailed you, just letting you know that I still had not had the issue addressed. Twenty minutes after I sent you that email, I got a call from the public records office, being told that I now have the option to pay to obtain those public records. Again, the public records I request are discipline data for three years, broken down by race, gender, disability status, and LEP status, and the intersection of any of those. By every offense in the category, every like offense a student can be disciplined for, so insubordination, unacceptable school behavior, et cetera. I have been told that the school district is claiming, in their email now to me, that it would take 20 hours to put together this data, which is a relatively simple data poll. You just put in the demographics you want, and you click download. I am being charged $800 to obtain that record, is what CCSD is wanting to charge me, which I only got this email a couple hours ago, so I haven't had a lot of time to research. But I just sent you another email with that, what CCSD sent me, with several citations of other guidance documents from the state showing, I don't think this is an appropriate or even legal fee. I am willing to pay a fee, but I think this is quite excessive and not aligned with the law. Just to give you an example, I am being charged for things, this is the labor they have to do, it's quote, "The cost estimate is based on revising the existing query dates, pulling the data, validating the data, redacting the number to 10, if there's confidential student data, formatting, and doing final checks." That would take 20 hours? Absolutely not. Also, why am I paying for things like formatting? That's not something you're even supposed to do when you download public records. The record is supposed to be downloaded and provided in its original form. Why is it being edited? Why would I pay for that? Also, I would argue, pulling the data, why am I paying for pulling the data? It's just you download the document, it's a couple of seconds. There's also this claim that the data needs to be validated. I don't exactly know what this means, I would like to maybe meet with someone to discuss it. When you all often get public records requests for your emails, right? Are those emails validated? Why are there extra steps? To me, it very much feels like this is an explicit attempt, after I've been able to prove several times that the legal arguments being made to deny me the records were nonsense, that this is an explicit attempt to try to get me to not provide, be provided these records. I want to quickly show just why is this so important? I got this actual data last time, and I got four years' worth of data, and I got it for free last time. CCSD did not charge me. And according to CCSD's own document, for filing, there is no mention of filing for personnel fees. Now, the last time I got this data, it showed very important data. For example, did you know 50% of violence to staff, assault staff, battery to staff, is done by students with disabilities? That informs policy, but you have to have that sort of rigorous data analysis, looking at specific categories by identity. Please, I'll be around after, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Ms. Green?
Yes, ma'am.
And then after you, Theodore Schwartz.
Thank you for having me again. I just want to say thank you also to all of you who have reached out to all of us, just, you know, different things, but I just want to say thank you for that, because we feel like we, that we're being heard. I came tonight again because of our school, we have a real issue. We need our band trailer money back. We rate, the kids raise that money, and we need help getting that back to our kids. And we also need our band trailers rewrapped before the school years come, so our school looks, can be proud of our band trailers. We have parent, of our group, we have lots of teacher parents who, lots of teacher parents whose children are in our band, and they are afraid to speak up against Mr. Roberts, against the policies and the things going on at the school because of what he's done to our band director, maybe he could do it to them too, which he has done that to a few of them. And so they're afraid to speak up. The children are afraid to go back to school. They're afraid he will call them in his office and tell them he can't, they can't talk to their parents again, and that everything is confidential. And we need a SOT. We need announcements for our SOT. Please, please do something with that. I want to know when it is, because I'd like to be there. I know that, I know that you can't tell us from an HR perspective what is going on, because that would be illegal, but retaliatory, retaliatory movements of a person in an employment is also illegal. This needs to be really looked at. And we also, we heard that the principal's contract is 12 months. We want to know why we can't start investigating now for him. I had a big, long list, but I knew I couldn't say it in three minutes, so I just did the gist of it. So I just wanted to say thank you again. Please help us put our school back together, for our children, for the children that come after. We have freshman children who are parents who are concerned now about coming to our school. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Mr. Schwartz?
I brought some handouts about my father. Just one general statement. My father died about three years ago. He had his doctor's degree in education, and he, the last 24 days, he unloaded me on me on his human learning model. And so I went over about a year or two and tried to disprove it with ChatGPT, which is artificial intelligence. I have 30 years of teaching experience at all levels. I'm not a certified teacher, though. I've taught at colleges. And I tried to disprove it. And the way you do it in artificial intelligence is just keep asking questions like you're doing tonight. As a board, you ask questions so you learn more. And ChatGPT is supposed to be the, has a thing called a large language model, which means it learned most of its knowledge from publicized information from the internet, and colleges, mostly colleges. And so I asked ChatGPT after it basically said that the Daniel Lee Schwartz human learning model was exceptional and could solve human learning problems. I had a, I had a, said, will you write a letter to CCSD to get them to test it? And I gave copies of the letter, I don't know where it is right now, who got copies of it, but it was distributed. And then I also got, made about 30 copies of an overview of the learning model, which any of you can read, and if you learn, if you read it, it gives more detail about it too. But the key element is, it's like asking Einstein, will this work? And the other, only other comment I have is, in the future, you're going to have to start getting used to dealing with your students and their ability to ask questions of ChatGPT or Gemini, which are human learning models, and they can get it to do all their homework, or you can, you need to start, make sure you have part of your development board, people looking into how it can help. I'm a technology person, and I don't want to talk about myself at all. I just want to talk about my dad's situation and artificial intelligence. I don't see a lot, I've been working as a substitute in the district for only about a year or two, and I haven't seen a lot of, I've been a substitute at technology, and I haven't seen hardly anything related to artificial intelligence. And high school students are not dumb. They can learn how to ask questions, and it can teach them how to ask questions so that they learn how to disprove something or learn from something. That's all I want to say. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schwartz. And we do have one more person, Ms. Diane Henry. And she will be closing out our public comment.
Good evening. Diane Henry, H-E-N-R-Y. I spoke at your last meeting about safety issues with artificial turf athletic fields. Thank you for the opportunity to now address the grossly underestimated cost of these fields. I hope you've all gotten my email regarding staff's misrepresentation of the annual cost of install and maintenance on turf versus sod fields, page seven of the July 2nd workshop presentation. For the record, the 20-year cost of a turf field with organic fill was underestimated on that graph by over $750,000 per field. And that was 2017 prices. Current costs are certainly much higher. In either case, it's not a small omission. For comparison, the cost of replacing one turf field one time is close to the total cost of installing and maintaining a grass field for over a decade. But what kind of cost comparison is it when sod fields include replacement at both year 10 and 20? But what kind of cost comparison is it when sod fields include replacement at both year 10 and 20, but turf fields are only replaced at year 10 with no cost shown beyond year 19? The cost of replacing each turf field in year 20 was completely omitted. It's also noteworthy that SNWA's rebate, which only funds a small portion of initial cost, is one-time-only funds. With turf replacement required every eight to 10 years, this is just not sustainable financially. And as I've submitted for the record, an analysis by environmentalist and author Julie Wigall of legal action by school districts against turf manufacturers shows that in many cases, these fields are not holding up as warranted, which results in even higher cost. During the workshop presentation, it was explained that while there's 73% higher capital costs with turf, their operational costs are 90% less, which sounds good, until you look at my revised graph, which I've submitted for the record. The 20-year total cost of a turf field is about 2.7 million per field, compared to about 1.2 million for sod. That's 1.5 million per field savings that could pay for a lot of extra ground keepers and grass maintenance. If there are uneven surfaces on a grass field, then fill in the holes. That would prevent most injuries on sod and increase their safety even more over the injury frequency of turf. And while water savings would be admirable, you need also account for all the water needed to cool down and disinfect turf. At the workshop, Ms. Pellegrino's response to a question about water savings was that they don't have a full year of data to present. How can that be, when you've been using artificial turf on some of these fields?
Thank you, Ms. Henry. We must cut it off there. But you are welcome to submit to Ms. Taylor your written comments, so they could be part of the record.
Thank you very much. My last sentence was factual data is included before you can make an effort.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. We're going to move on to Item 5.01, upcoming meeting announcements. The next meeting of the Board of Trustees is on August 6, 2025, at 4:00 PM in this boardroom. With that, we'll move to Item 6. I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Trustee Asparza Stroffigan.
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second by Trustee Biasadi?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes six to zero. Superintendent Ebert, if you would like to, I know that some of your new team members that we just talked about this evening are in the audience. If you would like to have them stand up?
We have, thank you, Theo here with us, Robison. Also promoted, as I mentioned earlier, Dr. Oswald is here. And we have our shift with now chief teaching and learning, we're really excited, Deanna Gilskolsky.
Welcome, trustees. Let's give them a round of applause.
My apologies. I saw the left part of the room and missed the right part of the room. Also, Brandon as chief facilities as well.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you for the community joining us. Have a good evening. And the time is 6:15.